...order, March 3rd, 2025, Village of Deerfield, order trustee.
Mayor Shapiro, trustee Benton is absent, trustee Berg?
Here.
Trustee Goldstone?
Here.
Trustee Jacoby?
Here.
Trustee Metzchilders is absent, trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
We have a quorum.
If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is a report from Brian on Field of Honor.
Yes, hi, good evening and thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to promote the Deerfield Field of Honor that we plan on doing this year. Just want to get you to just try and imagine a park that is just transformed into a sea of red, white, and blue, where you're walking through a field of American flags where you could touch them, feel them, as they catch the wind. And while you're walking through that, you're looking at a bunch of dedications of the flags for those who have served or are currently serving in the armed forces. That's what the Field of Honor is, and what we're doing this year is an event that will be held at Jewett Park where we will have 500 American flags within the park on display. Anyone can sponsor a flag from the community to where they can dedicate it to a service member, whether active or a veteran, and dedicate those flags in an opportunity to display a personal message or a heartfelt message about their family member or service member. At the conclusion of the event, whoever donates or when they purchase a flag, they'll be able to come and pick up the flag and then display the flag in their front yard if they so choose. If somebody does dedicate a flag and does not wish to take the flag and donate it back to the committee, we would just use it again either in the following years that we plan on doing this. Our plan is to do this on November 7th through 11th this year at Jewett Park, right near the Veterans Memorial that we have over at the Park District. The backdrop is just going to be phenomenal, just seeing the 500 flags in the field. The partners that we sort of have, I have gotten into this initially was the Park District can't really do this whole event without having a Park District to where we can use the field. But in addition to that, the village has been very kind to get involved. Public Works, like I said, the Park District, the Fire Department, and the Library, along with the Deerfield American Legion, we are all working together in order to get this event off and running. You think, okay, the flags, the purpose is first and foremost to honor our veterans and service members, and the families and the sacrifices that the entire families and everybody goes through with their veterans or servicemen. Through this event, with the donations, we will be donating to two Lake County organizations that help our veterans, the Midwest Veterans Closet and the Lake County Honor Flight. Little history of the Veterans Closet is they are honoring those veterans. Basically, a one-stop shop for the veterans to where they can get food, basic needs, furniture, and most help them to not become homeless and just to give them any of their resources that they need. We, as a police department, donate and work with them quite frequently throughout the year on other events. Deerfield, the Lake County Honor Flight, this is an organization that takes veterans on a multi-day trip to Washington DC to visit the memorials dedicated for the wars that they have served and sacrificed for. That little picture is actually the last Lake County Honor Flight that was, that went to see the memorials. Then always the question is, how can you help? Volunteer your time. We are going to need hundreds of volunteers from start to finish. Just an example is, we're doing 500 flags. We get from the Colonial Flag, they send us all the flags, but we have to put them together. Then we have to lay out the field that, we're going to get assistance with that, then we have to put the flags up, and then there's four days that we have to have somebody there constantly, not constantly, but be able to take the donations. Donate the $30, $35 for the flag that you'll be able to keep your flag. We have done, come up with some sponsorship levels. The bronze is $500. Get event recognition, social media shout-out, and five flags, silver is $1,000, and each level gets you a little bit more notoriety to the program. General information, we get through the website, there's a QR code that'll show the other stuff to get you a little bit more information on it. Like I said, I'm the project chair. My right-hand man right there, Oliver Cattola, has been helping out veteran himself, so we're taking this to the limit on that. So, I do have, just want to say thank you for allowing me to bring this to your attention. I do have a short video. It's of the Wheaton, where I've seen it for the last three years, and it's sort of, not sort of, but it's breathtaking to see what they do. They do a presentation of 2,000 flags. So, I will, if there's no questions, I'll go into this. Any questions, you know where to find myself or Oliver, but I do want to say thank you for the support from the village with this project.
Before you roll the video. This is amazing. I'm glad that you're taking, the two of you are taking the initiative with this. It kind of is personal to me because I think many of the folks in this room know how much I care about our veterans in our community, in meeting with them, and they're important to us. And so, this is just a really wonderful way of showing that recognition and a tribute to people and servicemen and women. And November 11th will be on Veterans Day, right?
Yep.
Now, was it your plan to do this once every year, five years, 10 years? What are your thoughts about doing this in the future?
It is, speaking with people and just presenting this a few times, I'd like to do it every year. It is something that, it's only, it's going to grow each year by word of mouth. The location, we've had conversation doing it at Jewett Park here, people are going to see it via the train, it's going to bring in other communities, it just, Wheaton does theirs over 4th of July, it's a great time to do it as well, but I think the way we have it set up where it's going to end with the service at the, for the Veterans Day, excuse me, I think it's just going to, it's just going to keep increasing. I'd like to do it every year, we'll have to, we'll see. If it's something that, you know, we want to continue to do every year, I think we're going to run out of flags, keeping my fingers crossed, but that is a great problem to have.
Well, you can count on me to get a flag and to offer time, volunteer as we get closer. Thank you both for your leadership on this.
Appreciate that. And let me, like I said-
Let's see, the video.
Yes. No talking on this, it's just the, what the video, this, like I said, Wheaton's.
And this is 2,000 flags.
2,000 flags.
Shows the scale.
Thanks for putting on a clean t-shirt.
That's Oliver's editing.
I mean, can you just imagine how those men and women at the service on the 11th are going to feel when they see this? I mean, that's just going to be really cool.
And, you know, you could say however it's been described as breathtaking, and it is. It literally is. So, again, thank you for the couple of minutes.
We look forward to more reports as we get closer.
I'll be more than happy to keep them going.
Thank you both.
And I guess we can do our first plug. Briarwood Country Club is actually our first bronze donator, so.
Oh, great.
Give them a little throw-out for being the first ones to jump on.
Outstanding.
That's great.
Thank you.
Minutes of our previous meeting of February 18th, 2025, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think I need to abstain as I wasn't here. Treasures report, Eric.
This is the January 2025 treasures report. It represents the first month of the new year. There's not too much analysis, we can do only one year, or only one month in, but I can give you a few highlights for tonight. Sales tax continues to exceed the prior two years, due likely to an increase in cost of the goods that people are purchasing. We also have a couple of new businesses in there, so good news there, too. Water and sewer billing reflects lower usage months, very typical this time of year. Hotel tax reflects payments from five hotels and back payment from one hotel. We're still working with one hotel that had a change in ownership to get them caught back up, but we're in contact with them and working with them, so not a real concern there. Electric utility tax was received shortly after year-end, so you see a zero in the report, but it did come in. Building permit revenue includes the normal recurring permits, but also some larger permits, Lake Cook Crossing, Sky Zone, and Sephora. And state income tax increased as well. On the expenditure side, many of the payments that we make in January actually relate back to 2024, so you don't see them in this report, but you do see them in the pre-list every meeting. Overall, the operating expenditures are below projection, again, expected this time of year due to the timing of seasonal or once-a-year type expenditures like the general liability insurance, memberships, or special events. So, we are early in the year, but off to a good start. Happy to answer any questions there may be.
Anything? Elaine, anything?
All good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bills and payroll.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yeah.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Mayor Shapiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
This is the time during a meeting where we offer the public an opportunity to make comments. I see that we have a number of young people in the room, in case any of you want to make a comment about any item that's not on the agenda, or why you're here, and why we have the pleasure of seeing your faces here, that's great. If there's no public comment, then we'll move on, but is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to our reports. Consent agenda, there's one item, item 2521, a resolution to approve municipal facility acceptance agreement with Lake County for pathway adjacent to Saunders Road. Is there any explanation anyone needs for this item?
Completely consistent with what we've approved before, as well as the need to have Lake County, us to agree with Lake County that the petitioner and the property owner will take care of this stuff. Ben?
Just the one note is, there's a copy of the resolution that's on the dais, and that's just because when we drafted this in the middle of last week, the property had not closed yet, and now it is closed. And so, the developer's now the owner, so we just wanted to reflect that in the resolution we're approving this evening. But otherwise, it's the same, other than a change of the recitals.
So, again, petitioner will be agreeing, has agreed to take care of this pathway, so it won't be a village responsibility, but it needs to be our responsibility that we can end the handoff so that Lake County doesn't respond. We've done this before with a lot of other folks.
So many details.
So-
Getting it done right, though, Mary.
Yes.
So much to do, so little time. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yeah.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Mayor Shapiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There's no old business, we have three items on new business. The first one is 2507, a resolution approving a contract for electric resi- resi- I can't say it, imaging survey.
Underground cemetery stuff.
Yes, let's call it cemetery survey.
Thank you.
As the board knows, the cemetery was founded in the 1850s, and many of the plot markers have been deteriorated or lost over time. I guesstimate about a quarter of the headstones are gone at this point, maybe a few more. Although plots were sold long ago, families frequently consult with staff to determine if there are spots available in the family plots that they have. I know of at least four upcoming burials. While staff has worked with Carolyn to survey a few plots annually, typically we've done about two rows. We've determined a comprehensive final study would be a lot more efficient at this point. Instead of doing a few rows, we'll do the entire thing. It'll also be significantly more cost-effective to do it this way.
Find out what's there and what's available.
Exactly. So, if anyone's watched the Travel or History Channels, you've seen ground penetrating radar where they have like on wheels, they like push the cart over the ground if they're looking for like Robin Hood or something like that. You can see the cemetery graves. So, you can see where some of the old concrete vaults are, or in many cases with the older spats, there's a wooden casket, or nothing at all. But you see, when you look at these, basically like how deep the graves are, and then if there's any movement there. So, it's pretty interesting. I did attach a photo of the aerial images that we get, so she flies a drone over and then overlays that information to determine where the known and unknown graves are.
And Justin, help me again understand, why is this coming up now?
So, as we have more families who are interested in being buried in these spots, if there's no headstone, otherwise, I have a six-foot iron rod that I stick in the ground, which isn't always the most efficient way to do it.
Right, understood.
So, you know, the last thing we'd want to do is accidentally dig up a body that's there when we don't think that one is there.
Yeah, no, that, that would be not a good thing.
No, and it happens.
So, if, once we locate all of the people who are buried there, if there are no markers on the site of the grave, are we informing the families of these people that they're there? Are people going to replace the markers? Are we just going to keep a map for ourselves so we know?
It's an internal map that we'll use. Again, it's something we'll probably publish online, just as an FYI to the public who's interested in Deerfield history.
Because if your family owns plots that are unused-
Right.
It would be important for them-
No question.
And consistent with our caretaker-ness of this facility, that we help them.
Of course, to give them the opportunity-
Exactly.
To mark, you know, what's there, who's there, and I-
I would also say we are just not, this isn't a really big job for us, so we're learning it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's not like we're a huge cemetery management company.
No, it's true.
So, we're working our way through it, but figuring out that we just don't want to put people on top of people, and we also don't want people to get hurt walking through the cemetery, because that's the other issue.
The ground sinks.
The ground sinks.
Do you think it's worthwhile for, if there are graves there without markings, to let the family know?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, they can do what they feel is right, to designate those graves.
Yeah, and just reminder to the board, this was a township cemetery until mid-'80s, maybe late, early-'90s, when the village decided, offered, because nobody else would be a caretaker for it, that's when we became responsible for this.
Wow.
So, we're kind of-
Right.
Supporting something that we didn't help organize. On the other hand, who else is going to?
Right, no, I, it's a valuable thing. I just would hope that we do inform people who own a plot.
I receive maybe a dozen phone calls from interested families.
Really?
In many cases, they have the original cemetery deed, which was sold, again, some of them going back to the 1850s.
That's amazing.
So, they have to procure that to determine it. But again, we have more and more families who are interested in doing this. So, doing the survey, historically, pre-doing these surveys, I would meet the family in the cemetery with a six-foot rod, and with their permission, we would start determining where graves were. So, this is a lot more efficient way to do that.
Great idea.
Nice question.
Sure.
Don't we have a cemetery commission, and if so, what do they do?
So, we do have a cemetery commission, of which I am the staff liaison. So, they also encourage the survey. The first time we did this in 2021, this was presented before, all these have been presented before them, but they're the ones who also encourage this, again, because it's a much more efficient way. It was actually Randall Burning and his wife who presented this idea to us originally as a consideration. There are a number of companies that do this, most of them are national. We just happen to have Carolyn, who's a Highland Park resident, who has a, her PhD in this, in this field, so it was just a pure coincidence that we had a, you know, a neighboring resident who actually was expert in this, who does this for us. But it was originally presented to the cemetery commission.
Good resource.
Got it, thanks.
Elaine, did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I think I cut you off. Were you, was there something else you wanted to?
No, at this point, like I said, this is, the cemetery commission is fully in favor of this. In the past, they've come out and then met with us when we were doing the surveys, and it's just, yeah, I'd prefer not to have to prod six feet into the ground with rods anymore. Much more efficient way to do this.
I think that's a good idea.
And staff felt, as we were talking about budget this year, let's just get a full understanding of what's there, as opposed to piecemealing this?
Yes.
For the variety of reasons that you guys can understand. If one family gets, just figure out what's there.
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
Any other discussion on this? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Move to approve the resolution to award a cemetery survey contract.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yeah.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Mayor Shapiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and I'll invite everyone out there if you want to see this getting done. It's actually a pretty interesting thing to see, is they're, again, doing this, and you see it in real time.
Oh, that'd be kind of cool.
Absolutely.
Let us know, Justin.
Yeah, it would be kind of cool to watch.
Item 2520, resolution approving an agreement for professional therapy services with First Responders Wellness Center LLC, 911 Wellness Group, and Living Pano Counseling.
Pano is, yeah, yeah. Good evening, thank you. The police department is asking for the resolution to allow us to use, like the mayor said, the three professional services for officer wellness checks. Our officer wellness and staff wellness for the police department is designed to scheduling everybody within a department for a 55-minute wellness check. The check is not, is a way to present other ways for our staff to deal with stress, and just to have a conversation with the therapist. All three of these organizations, their therapists are either former first responders and/or family members of first responders, so that they know exactly what everybody is dealing with. This, it's not any discipline involved with this, it's just a way for them to talk about other avenues and for stress relief and such, like I said before. The department doesn't get any information from these wellness checks whatsoever, it's kept with that, and the time of, this will be our third time with the Wellness Center, or the First Responders Wellness Center, and it'll be our third, that's our third time with them, first time with the other two. Reason why we're going to three different organizations is the difficulty in scheduling, because these wellness checks are also part of the Safety Act, that every police department in the state needs to do it, and the services, there's not that many of them. So, this is giving us a lot more flexibility to get all our staff in a timely fashion.
Is it only wellness checks, or is it other services as needed? So, I mean, one of your men or women sees a terrible tragedy and it's upsetting, will these services allow them to talk to a therapist?
Yes. Yeah, well, that's sort of with our officer wellness, we'll start with Katerina or Izzy, and then they will branch out to these organizations. There's time, there might be a time where they might just say, go to these organizations. If the officer gets, like, we've used the First Responder Wellness Center for, this will be our third year, some guys might be comfortable with who they've been seeing, and they might, might just branch out and reach out to them. So, it's not just this, it's other avenues for our officers and staff.
Where are these services provided?
They come to the police department. We will schedule, we try to schedule these five, maybe six, a day, that they come out, because then it's beneficial, they'll just block their whole day and come out to the police department, and that way our officers and staff aren't traveling to get the, get this wellness check. So. So, asking again for the approval of the resolution for the first, for the wellness checks with the First Responder Wellness Center, 911 Wellness Group, and Living Pano Counseling. The cost will not exceed $15,000, and this is a budgeted item.
And staff strongly recommends approval. And I did have the conversation today, just so the boards are aware, should other village employees encounter situations where they might need this counseling, because that could happen, these guys would be available.
That's great.
Public Works come onto a scene that's, you know, you think about a traffic accident, something, something, whatever, they would be available. So, it's broader than the police department, but staff strongly recommends the village board support this.
And we always have Kat and Izzy as well, that can start it.
And I think this is another thing that makes the, working at this agency, at this department, attractive for candidates.
Yes.
And retention. I mean, we're, we're taking care of our folks, and that's what you want to do.
And there has never been any, it's all very well-received by the officers and staff, there's been no, no issues that way either.
Good.
It's not the, it's not the big brother, and they see that, and it's been very beneficial.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Move-
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yeah.
Mayor Shapiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Ordnance amending section 3-8 of the municipal code to permit the sale of packaged alcohol at hotels.
Thank you, Mayor. Late last year, Chicago Marriott Suites in Parkway North approached the village with a request for a special liquor license to sell packaged alcohol, such as beer, wine, or premixed cocktails, at their front desk or market/pantry area. After discussions with hotel, village staff collaborated with village council to draft the tet ordinance, which has been reviewed by the police department, and they have no concerns. The proposed Class F1 liquor license can only be obtained if you already have a Class F liquor license, so you can't just procure this liquor license, you have to have both. It's an add-on, just like the BYOB license or the third-party delivery liquor license. The proposed cost for this license is $200, this would be on top of the $3,000 Class F liquor license fee, and currently, there are four hotels in Deerfield that currently have Class F licenses to begin with. With that, are there any questions?
So, they would all be eligible to get this license in addition-
Exactly.
-to what they already have.
And at least one of their hotel has expressed interest in potentially applying for this.
With the exception of Motel 8 or Red Roof, because they do not have a standing, they don't have a bar or restaurant.
Exactly.
So, my question is, is, I don't, I didn't know which hotel was asking for this.
So, my question is, is, I don't, I didn't know which hotel was asking for this, but is the convenience store where, in the hotel that they go to purchase this, is it 100, is there a person there 100% of the time? I just worry about underage people, you know, we were worried about Walgreens, when Walgreens changed their format.
It is a requirement that it has to be a locked, cab-it-lock cooler. So, we'd have to determine setup as part of, I imagine they'd probably pull a permit if they're going to renovate their pantry area, but staff would just ensure that it is locked and that it is being manned all 24 hours.
Yeah, well, someone has to unlock it, right?
Exactly.
Right, together.
Yes.
Are there other security measures that come with this, aside from that?
That is only a security measure. Typically, you have cameras in these areas. I mean, we have involved in hotels where you have that kind of like separate side pantry area that you would go into. There are no other requirements in here other than it being a secured lock cooler. And again, someone has to-
But in order to get the initial liquor license, they have to go through all the licensing checks and have their staff, you know, be checked out, all of that stuff prior to getting this overlay, I guess you'd call it.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Elaine, did you have anything?
I'm good.
Just the one, one question that came up to clarify, it was a question of this would mean that all four hotels would be eligible. However, we're only creating one license. And so, why they would be, while they can apply-
We have to change-
It will, it will come back to you for additional applicants if they do.
We've always had it that way.
Exactly, yes.
We always change the number of licenses we allow, based on how many we are giving out.
Right.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
That I know.
Any other discussion, questions? Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheimer?
Yes.
Mayor Shapiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion, excuse me, by the mayor and the board of trustees? Just a reminder, we have our committee of hold. We have a full agenda on March 12th at 3:00, and then we'll have a second committee of hold in April, to talk about more stuff. And I just found out, when did I find this out? Yesterday, that the Deerfield High School Robotics Team won state.
Oh, great.
Awesome, yeah.
Wow.
So, that's a fun thing. And I saw like a video of the competition. Well, congratulations. I saw a video, and it's really cool. Do you want to come up and talk about it?
Um, sure.
Please come up, introduce yourself, and-
Or send your robot up.
Or send the robot up, so we can give you a congratulations. Please tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Talia Helfand. I'm a senior at Deerfield. My robotics team consisted of 15 high schoolers, like all four ages. We competed in a series of five matches, and then we had three, or two playoff games, and our partner, a team from Carmel Catholic, we placed really well, and we got the highest score in the world, actually, of the season. And so, we're really excited to go to Houston, April 14th, to compete in the global tournament.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're really proud of you.
Thank you.
Hey, was there a video of that? Can we do some of that? Can you send that to us, kind of thing?
Yeah, you can also go onto our YouTube channel. It's called WarBots FTC. And there's, yeah, W-A-R-B-O-T-S, and then FTC. And we have an Instagram page, too, WarBots, same thing. So, there's plenty of videos there, but I can also send you guys a video if you'd like.
So, I learned that the assignment this year was create a robot that has an arm that can pick something up and drop it someplace else?
Mm-hmm.
And, or, can you explain that?
Yeah, so there's these little blocks, they're called specimen, and our robot is able to pick them up, and you can either place them in a lower bin or a higher bin, and that's how you're able to score points. But you can also connect them to these like little black hooks, and then it's called, oh, sorry, the blocks are samples, but with the black hooks are specimen. And then you can hang those up onto this like central bar area, and you can score more points with that as well. And then at the end of each match, you can, you have the opportunity to hang your robot on that metal bar, and you can also-
Do you have a name for your robot?
We don't. We had like a joke name, named after a kid on our team. But our team name is WarBots, and there's three teams at Deerfield.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Very cool.